Good evening, Winthrop, and welcome to the Winthrop Town Council meeting of January 5th, 2021. This meeting is being held remote via Zoom. Each individual person at the individual home. The meeting will be shown live on WCAT and will be recorded to be being rebroadcast during the coming weeks. The call in number for tonight's meeting or public comment is 1-646-558-8656. With a meeting ID of 820-2418-4257. Please call in for a public comment. I will now call the meeting to order. Any should you please take an attendance?
Council Reggero.
Here.
Council Flacott.
Here.
Council DeMarco.
Here.
Council Christopher.
Here.
Council Honan.
Yeah.
Council LaCanti. He's here. Council.
Yeah.
Council Vice President Latieri.
Yeah.
Council President Boncory.
Here. Thank you. I would now ask Council DeMarco again to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 15th, 2020 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been made by Council. Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
Seconded by Council for Reno. Are there any discussion on the minutes? Are there any amendments? Any admissions, any deletions? There are none, all goes in favor, please signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Council Reggero.
Yes.
Council Flacott.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council LaCanti.
I abstain.
Council Perino.
Yes.
Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes. Thank you. Moving right along. As all we all know, Section 3.1 of the Winthrop Town Charter dictates that the town council president present the state of the town message addressing the problems that the town has been facing and giving a recap of the year and what opportunities that we have going forward. In January last year, probably at this exact date, the new town council was sworn in pledging unity and energetic youthful vision for the future. We recall being in the coming school auditorium with signs everywhere saying love and peace and friendship. We were off to a great year and we could never have predicted any kind of problem this year other than maybe for Boston sports because we had lost Brady, we lost Gronk, and we lost Mookie Betts. We know how that turned out now at the end of the year. That was a problem. But we didn't see any other problems coming up other than maybe at the time we were having a problem getting insurance for the town of Winthrop in that first month. But in February, the world was attacked by an unseen enemy, COVID-19, a virus which quickly became the worst pandemic since the Middle Ages, killing over 340,000 Americans. Winthrop was pulled into that unwanted war when the first of over 12,000 people in Massachusetts died and he was a Winthrop president. He was followed by 31 more Winthrop presidents who succumbed to this vicious disease by the year's end. We pray for them, for each and every one of them and for their families and friends that they left behind. We grieve. Immediately upon the beginning of this war, with the collaboration of the town manager, the town council president, and the board of health, we were able to declare a state of emergency and institute a curfew. Schools were closed. The health officer, our police chiefs, our fire chief opened the emergency operations center within 24 hours. Although town hall, the library, the senior center were closed to the public, our administration and all departments were constantly fighting this war to keep Winthrop citizens safe. The emergency operations center was open and was manned daily by a town health officer, a chief of police, a chief of fire, members of public safety, and the DPW. During the next three months, the center was responsible for tracing each and every positive case of COVID-19. The center was responsible for setting up with action ambulance a testing strike team to test corrugate care facilities in town where the most vulnerable populations existed and were seeing outbreaks. The CLAIR program was adopted to provide mental health and substance abuse services to coincide with people that were having problems and anxieties with the COVID-19. The school department, senior center staff, and parks and rec go in forces to make sure no one went hungry. The school served free breakfast and lunches throughout the summer and has continued to supply all remote students with food. The food bank collected and distributed much needed supplies to approximately 200 households each and every week, filling between 500 to 600 people during the height of the pandemic. And thankfully, now the Winthrop Food Bank, Veterans Food Bank, and Mia Mori have taken over this much needed service. A council of ages has continued to provide over 1,000 meals to seniors. It was heartwarming, very heartwarming, to see Winthrop neighbors helping neighbors, dropping off food, dropping off supplies. And sometimes people who owned food businesses that live in Winthrop dropping off truckloads of food, produce, and supplies for their neighbors. It was really heartwarming to see that. DPW has successfully retrofitted all municipal buildings with the installation of 100 germ shields, 45 touchless faucets in restrooms, new fresh air exchange systems. All classrooms and offices at schools have flaxseed glass barriers and new MERV 13 to 15 filters, the strongest kind. In August, we were able to convince the state to open a stop the spread site in Winthrop, which we now have been able to keep in place up to date and have conducted over 33,000 tests as of the end of the year. Of those 33,000 tests, probably 22,000 to 26,000 were Winthrop residents. In that year, we have detected 1,332 positive cases of which up until the last day of the year, 1,169 had recovered and 131 remained in isolation. I guess as of today, on the 31st to today, we've gone up to 1,404 positive cases. COVID-19 will remain a problem in 2021 as we go forward. We will be fighting and we will win this war by following the mask protocols, social distancing, and getting our population vaccinated as soon as possible. And that vaccination will begin when our first responders are set to receive their first doses of vaccination on January 15th. Hopefully, we will be receiving many more doses soon and put an end to this war. I would like to acknowledge young peaceful protesters during the summer and fall protests and counter protests broadened awareness to the town that there was a need for the Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations and a town resolution rejecting hate and welcoming all. This was a proud moment for the town council who helped accomplish this. As I wrote this, as I watched Santa go by on his sleigh at the top of one of our Winthrop fire engines on Christmas Eve, I saw the faces of my grandchildren and of people coming out of their houses to greet Santa. I felt a real sense of pride, my hometown. That same sense of pride as I watched the high school seniors parade where they raised two truckloads of food and supplies for their neighbors who were in need. Winthrop is a great place and Winthrop has a great future. When I figured we made it through and there could be no more major problems after Santa came through, we had the worst news we could have had. And then the General Chara left. It's that the man who had been doing more for Winthrop over the past 40 years than any other single person in the history of Winthrop, our former selectman and Speaker of the House, our own Bob Delio, resigned his speakership to move onto his alma mater, Eastern University. It's a problem for Winthrop. Thank you for all he has done and we wish him so much well in his future. I would like to thank the town council, town manager Austin Faison, CFO Anna Freeman, and all department heads and their staffs, all town committees, whether elected or appointed for what they do. Each of you working together daily in a spirit of cooperation and town loyalty is responsible for the significant improvement in town services to our citizens despite the town hall not being able to open to the public. I want to put a special thank you into Senator Joe Boncory, Speaker Bob Delio, for all they have done during this year for our town. It's impossible to state every achievement of our hardworking employees, committee members, town council, town managers, school superintendent's office, school department have accomplished. But I'm going to give a brief summary of each of them. A town council over the past year has approved a new zoning map for the Center Business District, a problem that had been going on for quite some time. They resolved it this year. The town council put through a new pilot parking program for Point Shirley. They put through a new ordinance that allows outdoor parking to help the restaurants with the pandemic and to pass an outdoor seating ordinance for the entire future. They voted on numerous parking ordinances to enhance the parking capabilities in our community. They voted to reduce the speed limit in town to 20 miles per hour. The council was busy. It was busy each and every month and has accomplishments. One of the biggest accomplishments, which we don't know if it's coming to fruition or not, is requesting National Grid, Gas Company, and MWRA and Comcast to consider discounts to our citizens, which we passed in a vote not long ago. Our town manager's office has continued operations in the town to open to public health emergency. There has not been one meeting that's been missed or shifted. We've had virtual meetings and by doing this in virtual, we were able to have every meeting all year long. And the meetings were, I think, better attended because anybody could join from their own home in the safety of their home. I want to thank the town managers and administration for being able to get us up and working remotely. We also, the town manager's office has received grants for pockets, received grants to put shadows in. We have also worked with Chelsea Revere and formed the Bar Foundation to set a regional climate resiliency office and received a $600,000 grant for that purpose, which will be voted on hopefully tonight. Our finance commission department with due diligence and, you know, ongoing economic problems has taken over the care of the CARES Act money, which we have spent over $700,000 of CARES Act money, which has come from FEMA and CARES. And that money has been provided to upgrade all of the things that we talked about as far as putting in shields in every single building, supplying masks, PPE for our employees and the public through the protocol. During the pandemic, they were also able to reinstitute our insurance, which we had a serious problem with insurance at the beginning. And if it wasn't for a town manager, an assistant town manager, the work that they did and the training they set up to get that insurance, we would not have insurance. But we did receive insurance and are fully covered as of today. CFO closed fiscal year 20 with a healthy free cash balance. And that was done by not, you know, filling many of the offices that were empty. And we were able to make sure that we closed the year with a healthy free cash balance. And our bond rating was upgraded in its management score. So, I mean, we got a very good bond rating even though we were in this pandemic. And we closed the year with a healthy cash balance. Many projects are being worked on in the finance department. A Department of Public Works, which is amazing, is that they completed so much more than just putting up all those germ shields and touchless faucets and re-outfitting all the schools and every building. They also completed over 70,000 square yards of pavement and restoration in the town. They put in a fully looped bicycle sheared lane network. They replaced 3,000 square feet of damaged sidewalk. They moved and replaced 100 full lead line services from the water distribution system and planted 50 trees. There were 2,656 click fix work orders that were put in during the year. Imagine that 2,656 click fix programs. Each of them were closed out, responded to and closed out by the DPW. In addition to that, they installed a new flooring system at the senior center, completed the Miller House Field project, repaired reworks at the library, EBI noon, and the senior center, repaired 18 water main breaks, 30 water service leaks, eight sewer breaks. They also replaced 10 gate valves, 15 hydrants, and rebuilt a 20-inch pressa reducing valve. The 1 million gallon water tank that we have at the top of the hill was completely emptied and underwent a full interior and exterior extension to comply with TEP sanitary survey requirements. 80 storm drains and 40 manhole structures were rebuilt and 250 catch basins were cleaned and inspected. 250 feet of new storm drain was replaced on Sturgis Street prior to the paving project. All this in the Center Business District project, completely having all of its utility work underground finished. It's hard to imagine it has been accomplished. And I want to thank Director Calla, who's online here with us, saying that was quite a bit of work. As far as the Winthrop schools, initially had a shutdown school on March 16th. And the school department has been busy since. First teaching teachers how to teach remote, then supplying 1,900 students with the iPads and tools that they needed to learn remotely. Besides feeding everybody throughout the entire summer, the school department brought in technology. They brought in new Ombics at all levels for teachers and students. They set up hotspots for 150 families so that they would have access to school in the Zoom platform. They purchased books to be sent home to students. The school department also had to get new boilers in the AT Coming School and the Gorman Fort Bank School, which was done. They installed a new playground at the AT Coming School. They purchased PPE for all staff, students, masks, gowns, goggles, and gloves. And as you saw, as when the special needs kids came in and the ESL workers were working, they were wearing masks, gowns, goggles, and gloves. And they were practicing social distancing and teaching these students. They also purchased electrostatic sanitizing machines, hand sanitizer stations, and safety signage in all schools. Teachers were returned to the school building in August. Classrooms, they signed an MOU and everybody has been working since August 26th. Yesterday, children went back to school, half of them, on a hybrid basis. I was fortunate enough to be able to see the kids out at recess because it was, I was on my way to town hall. And it was amazing and it was really uplifting to see these youngsters out at recess enjoying being back to school and part of school. And hopefully, this will work out terrifically. Our inspectional services department has begun a new online permitting access for more efficient progress with permitting. And the department has issued 691 permits this year for building repairs. And it's amazing because, you know, Allegie and the Special Service Department have been working during COVID, inspecting every restaurant, every business, making sure everyone is following the protocols that they have to follow for COVID-19. But at the same time, they worked on issuing and permitting 691 permits of people in Winthrop who are working to make their houses look better and to make Winthrop a better place. And it is working. People who couldn't spend their money taking vacations spent their money fixing their houses and making Winthrop look better. And we appreciate that. I appreciate it. The fire department has appointed four new firefighters under a state grant. And they, those firefighters have completed the first ever hybrid model of a firefighting academy. And during the year of 2020, our fire responders have responded to over 2,000 calls for medical assistance, of course, with great professionalism. Imagine 2,000 calls this year. Our police department and officers have worked diligently and collaborating with other departments to make this year a success as well. They were involved in every part of the pandemic situation as far as safety for the testing sites, as far as safety for the protests and the counter protests. And they've done a wonderful job. And in doing that, they also, you know, continued their tradition of working with the community and putting together, you know, the barbecues that they used to do for seniors. But they did it in a new way as drive-throughs. Very proud of everything that we've done. The CLAIR program and, you know, when calls are being made now, people are getting help from CLAIR as well as a call from police. So that is a good thing. A harbor master replaced his 38-year-old wheeler with a new boat. And he is retrofitting the lights in the marina with new lights to help with the conserve energy. Our Parks and Rec Department has worked throughout the pandemic. Besides running the food banks, they had a full day summer program with 40 children. And they divided it into groups of 10 persons so that they would follow the protocols. They've had after-school programs running at the Memorial Gym with the same COVID protocols. They have now set up traveling basketball for boys and girls running from December to March. A town clerk's office, even though there was a pandemic, certified thousands of signatures for the election, a one-of-a-kind presidential election that we had. I want to thank Joanne D'Amato, the assistant clerk, for the fine job that she did in making sure that that election was successful. We had the results of the election within four to five hours when some states couldn't get it done in four to five weeks. So I'm very proud of Assistant Clerk Joanne D'Amato for that. Our treasures office is continuing to mail out real estate bills for some property, motor vehicle excise taxes, and the bills are coming in. Not all of us coming in as fast as they have in past years, but the bills are coming in and people are paying their bills. Unfortunately, also had, the treasures office had to place liens on 34 delinquent real estate bills and had to bring them into court. There is still the, they have also taken care of the stick program. And there's been no charge for seniors. There are 2,390 resident parking stickers and 835 visitor placards that have been issued this coming year since November. Our library is offering basic services and getting reading and viewing material into the hands of patrons during the front door pickups, averaging about 15 to 12 pickups a day and approximately 100 items in circulation daily. Our veterans department has been script beat and was working with the veterans. And they had two successful Veterans Day events. Ice rink and other enterprise ferry both doing very well. The rink has upgraded its system with a new system that separates the air conditioning system from the cooling system, which is a positive cash flow for the enterprise fund. They're working with architects and engineers for ADA improvements for the rink. And the rink has the ferry. You have not required any funding to cover their budget deficits or any budget deficits. The ferry was operational for five weeks and turned a profit in those five weeks. And they have got all of the crew back and they've followed and retrofitted the vessel to be COVID-safe. I'm proud to say all these things show that the town has not stopped because of the war against COVID. Our people are working and they're working real hard. I'm proud to say that moving forward into 2021, we have the following plans of things that we hope to see accomplished. We hope that the middle school zoning will be accomplished within the next two months. An RFP will be sent out. The middle school zoning has been sent to the planning board. And we're just waiting to get it back and approved. And we'll be sending out RFPs for developers. We'll be hauling the opening of the Anthony Fusilli Field House very soon. We will have a completed dog park in town, Veterans Road, by the summer of 2020. It should be up and open and operational as well as completion of the new high school state-of-the-art tennis court. Hopefully, we will have the finished completion of the Center Business District project and a new revitalized French square by this time next year. Progress moving forward on a new joint public safety building for police and fire department. The plans have been seen by many of the councils. And maybe now, hopefully, we'll be having some votes to move forward on that joint public safety building and we can find interest in raising the funds for that. Hopefully, there will be further progress on an access road for the Gorman Fort Bank School. And the town has, or 2021, hired. And the town has, or 2021, hired a planner. And that planner will be coming in and will be responsible for helping with the development of the middle school and will be helping us with some writing and getting some funds in. In conclusion, I'm glad you're, I'm sure you're happy to hear that. In conclusion, I'm really honored to say that I think Winthrop is a wonderful town to live in. It is important to preserve the safety and quality of life of our citizens and our visitors. Our town needs to continue to improve our community with well-paced development and encourage all citizens to become more involved with the future of our town by communicating their opinions, their ideas, and to invest in the prosperity of our community by participating in our meetings and our committees. I thank you all for your patience and that is the state of the town. Moving on. Thank you for the applause, Council General. The next thing on the agenda is very important. And I know Bob was invited to attend. Denise, have you heard whether Bob is in? Joined us for the meeting?
I did hear he had several items on his agenda and he was going to try, but they couldn't guarantee anything.
Okay. To Bob DeLeo, wherever you are, my dear friend. The town of Winthrop Town Council citation. Be it known to all that the town of Winthrop and the Winthrop Town Council hereby offers its appreciation to Robert DeLeo, the longest-serving speaker in Massachusetts history. On behalf of the residents of the town of Winthrop, which are all your neighbors, you cannot begin to express our thanks for all you have done for your community and for our state. Your presence in the State House will be missed. Your accomplishments are many, too many, to fill this page. Your knowledge of our government and generosity will never be forgotten. We wish you nothing but great luck and prosperity with your future resignation from the House and the beginning of a new chapter in your life. Given this fifth day of January 2021. At Winthrop, Massachusetts, signed by Paul Boncory Esquire, Council President, Council Members Rich Farino, Peter Christopher, James Luteri, Steve Ruggiero, Nick LaConte, Barbara Flarkott, Tracy Honan, and Robert DiMarco. Thank you. We will now open to public comment and I can stop talking. If anyone wishes to speak on public comment, again, the number is 1-646-558-8656. And the meeting ID is 820-2418-4257.
We have Wendy.
Good evening. Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you, Council President. That was long, but very detailed. One of the things you mentioned, Council President, is that the amount of participation in local government and the increase of participation that COVID has provided our citizens will have through the Zoom process. I would encourage our, all of our public meetings, school committee, finance, all of them, even once this pandemic is over, to find a way to do this on a regular basis. I would love to see it put up for a vote at some point and put on your agenda. I feel very strongly that I've never seen so many people active and participating and having knowledge than they, more than they have in the past about what's happening in town. It's not scuttlebutt. They're not hearing rumors. They actually get to see it, hear it, and participate in it on a much regular basis. It's a suggestion that I would have for all of you and thank you all for all your hard work.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else?
Let's see, any other hands up?
I really checked it once at that one. That was less than a half hour. I thought it was going over a half hour. All right, if there's no other public comment, is there any correspondence that you received, Denise?
Yes, we did get a copy of a letter from Donna Riley. She wanted to share to the town council and town manager that she sent a letter to the Governor Baker about the need to include planes and airports and the newly created transportation and climate initiative program signed on to by several governors. She also wanted to thank Congresswoman Clark, House Speaker DeLeo, Senator Boncory, for their work on a mandate for the Federal Aviation Administration to update certain outdated airplane noise installations that were installed in households before 1993. And that's it on my end.
Okay, does anyone else have any correspondence? All right, here we go. We'll move on to committee reports. Finance Committee?
Thank you, Council President. Very good speech. Thank you for that. It's always good to be updated. The Finance Committee did meet on December 21st, 2020 at 5 o'clock via Zoom. There were multiple people in attendance, including the committee, myself, Consulors Farino and Honan. We discussed the fiscal 21 budget and certain items in it concerning the our thoughts on the MMA conference to obviously not use that money for this year, which we had already taken out of the budget. We discussed the planner and our individual thoughts on that and spending that amount of money now. We also discussed human resources and the budget within human resources to make sure that we are all okay with that. The the motion that we discussed was the motion for the $20,000 from the Town Council Reserve for inspectional services and pest control. There was discussion, as there is with all motions, the discussion basically focused on the fact that, you know, we want to create an environment where we're not asking for money that we've already spent. So we did obviously try to get that point across and I think everybody understands that. But we did vote in favor of that unanimously and will vote on that under Old Business. We had some items on airport houses on the agenda, which we did not end up discussing. They did not come to fruition and that was it. The meeting was adjourned about 6:15.
Okay. And that is both the Finance Committee and Citizens Advisory Committee?
No, that was the Finance Committee. Citizens Advisory Committee, which is strictly the citizens part of the finance commission, did meet this evening. They welcomed in their new members, Shannon Pulhos and and Joe Hanlon. And their sole purpose on the agenda tonight was basically an introduction and also to elect a chairperson, which they did. And that was Karen Chavez. You know, they did talk about the fact that, you know, we think this is going to be a fantastic committee and we thank Council President for his nominations for this. We also understand that with, with Bob not there anymore, that those are big shoes to fill, but they are more than willing and ready to, to complete that task. So there will be, we will be having a finance commission meeting. I don't have the date. It will be before our next council meeting, which is on the 19th. So it will be before that. And we will ask for the CFO to join us and go over some of fiscal 21 budget questions and also try to get a jump on fiscal 22 on some of the questions we may have. But it was a very quick meeting, more introductory, and congratulations to Councilperson Karen Chavez for that committee.
Thank you. That's two committees, the Public Safety Committee and Capital Assets. Did you have a meeting?
Yes, we have a report. The Public Safety Committee met jointly with the Capital Asset Committee on 12:30, 2020, at 6 o'clock to evaluate new sites for a public safety building. The committee explained that Castle Booze had been hired to research potential sites in Winthrop and had narrowed the selection down to two sites, the Little League ball field and the seventh hole of the golf course. Mr. Joe Murphy, representing the Winthrop Little League Organization, reported that it would be an extreme hardship to lose the current Little League site since it was well-used by the Winthrop Little League and the girl softball team. He pointed out that this field is considered the best Little League site on the North Shore and the organization had spent $30,000 and a lot of effort into upgrading the site over the past few years, as well as seeing considerable growth in Little League participation, especially over the past year. Mr. Robert Noonan, representing the Winthrop Golf Course, reported that the organization had about 15 years left on its lease with the town and would fight to maintain the golf course. He explained it was a nine-hole course that could not be reconfigured in their current space and that the act of organization had grown substantially of mostly Winthrop residents. Councilor Farino expressed the belief that reimbursement of the displaced organization should be considered part of the expenses of the site choice and the consultant had not included that. It was also pointed out that environmental and floodplain issues had not been considered. Recreation Director Sean Driscoll expressed concern for disrupting the successful Little League that Salucci Field, which might be considered as a replacement field, was already fully used by the growing soccer teams. And he believed another site would be a better choice, another site for the public safety building. Several participants expressed concern that the middle school site had not been fully considered when it would cause the lease disruption and still leave room for financial investment. Others expressed concern that obtaining a new public safety building not be further delayed since it had been an open project since the 1960s and was badly needed. Councilor LaConte expressed the belief that choosing a site should come after all potential costs were considered. It was moved and approved that the motion on a choice of site for the new public safety building be tabled until further exploration of another site and full consideration of the financial costs of any site choice be made. In addition, in addition, the Public Safety Committee, with members present of the Capital Assets Committee, discussed the motion to the Town Council by Councilor DiMarco to return to the Harvey Room for council meetings since it was safe for our children to return to in-person school. During the discussion, Councilor Flarkott stated that there were good reasons to return the children to school since research was showing the children were suffering detriment from not being there. However, the Town Council was not suffering any loss and was performing well with remote meetings. Since safety rules require no more than four occupants in the Harvey Room, other locations for the Town Council meetings were discussed and discarded. Councilor LaConte moved that the original motion be amended before being presented to the council. His amendment was approved and the amended motion was approved by the committee and will be presented in Old Business. By both the Public Safety Committee Chair and Councilor Farino Chair of the Capital Assets Committee.
Okay, thank you very much, Council Flarkott. And we will take that up under Old Business. Moving on, rules and ordinance?
We did not have a meeting in this period. There was a miscommunication about a joint meeting that was supposed to take place.
Okay. And that was on the traffic residency and sustainability agreement, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, but I hope that will still come up under Old Business.
Council President?
Yes.
We, I do have an update on the Miller Field and SBAC joint committee meetings with the tennis courts. If I could entertain a couple of minutes. And I want to thank Dave Gerard, who's a member of both committees, was an invaluable member on the SBAC and has been an invaluable member on the Miller Field. And, and he put together a brief summary of where we are right now and where we're going forward. So I just thought, take a couple of minutes just to read this. And he goes through some early stuff, which I don't have to go over. But basically, he says, what is included in this project? And we're discussing the tennis court project down, which you mentioned in your, in your state of the town speech. What's included in this project are four brand-new tennis courts, including nets, fencing, hitting walls, screens, et cetera. Improved drainage to allow water that falls on the court to be collected and drained and water that falls outside the court to be managed away from the court and directed in the municipal drainage system. An improved intersection at Ocean View and Cross Street to make the pedestrian crossing safer. A continuous sidewalk around the courts and parking areas and focused entrance exits to the parking area to allow pedestrians to more safely navigate the area. More and safer parking. An additional seven parking spaces would be generated by adjusting the intersection. And regarding the schedule, the current plan is to begin construction in mid-March and be completed in mid-June. It is possible when, and whether, if weather cooperates, construction could start earlier. And again, cooperative weather could finish a little earlier. The parking area and obviously the courts would be off limits during the construction. So, you know, this is just a little encouraging news that this project is going underway and should be completed by, you know, early summer of 2021.
Great. Hopefully, every project that we talked about in the statement of the town goes forward. That one is definitely ready. Moving on, Town Manager's Report.
Good evening, everyone. That was a very good speech by you, Council President. Just wanted to take an additional moment to thank everyone for the hard work over the past year. Some of my staff has put in some extraordinary effort over the year. And you did a very good job of doling out the credit. My main thing this time is very similar to what it's been in the past. Focus on COVID. Still need to wear the mask, still need to socially distance. Please think if you are going to dine or congregate with other people about your own pods. It looks like that variant that is very aggressive is already in this area potentially. This is unfortunately going to be a hard time. Our numbers are okay in our community, but we know that people don't just congregate within this community. People have lives. We all have lives and we need to get things for our homes and things like that. Just be cognizant of the rules. The Governor has rolled some things back a couple of weeks ago. Depending on where the numbers go, we'll see what phase and step that we fall into in the future. This is not to say anything about the schools. This is just talking about where we would fall in terms of businesses that the town side regulates. With that, I would like to open it up to our Public Health Director, Meredith Hurley, to give everyone a quick update.
Hi, y'all. How are you? Happy New Year. I'm going to try and share my screen. I think, hold on, quick second. All right, you guys seeing that okay?
Yep.
Okay. So as Council President updated us all about, so our total confirmed cases as of today were 1,404 with 32 deceased, 143 currently isolated. one hundred and forty-three currently isolated, and one thousand two hundred and twenty-nine um, now recovered. Our incidence rate from this last week um, was seventy-two point seven per hundred thousand over the last fourteen days, with our percent positive at five point nine percent. Both of these are lower than they've been in the last two weeks. Um, we are still designated as a red community, a high-risk community, because we hit both of those thresholds, which is greater than ten cases per hundred thousand, combined with a greater than five percent positivity rate. Our testing site continues and should be continuing until um, mid-January. We've had to make some modifications around the holiday schedule and also with the opening of schools. So, starting this week, we are in a Monday-through-Friday schedule from nine AM to one PM, and Saturday, twelve PM to seven PM. That is to help alleviate some of the traffic congestion that we see with the pickup and drop-offs around the R thirty Cummings School. We'll be moving indoor around the third week of January, using an appointment-based system with Project Beacon. This project has been extended until March thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. The final location and details will be announced by the end of this week. This graph here, I did some calculations this week, since our testing site has been open. I know the um, we've had a fair amount of questions around the usage from Winthrop residents versus non-residents. So what's reflected here is that two-thirds of those tests that we've run since August have been Winthrop residents, with about one-third being from um, non-residents. Here's kind of a further breakdown. On the right, you'll see the amount of tests that were run since August, um, and which, you know, visually, we've, in what we've seen is also with the demand is that we're seeing a large increase in the testing capacity. Um, and on the left-hand side, what you'll see is an overlay with the percent positive. Um, and that percent positive is for Winthrop residents, um, excluding those from out of town. Our, my office has been fielding a lot of questions around vaccination. Um, I'm just as, it's obviously giving a lot of hope to people, um, myself included, to start vaccination. So just yesterday, the governor's office released updated rollout plans for the vaccination. Um, Phase One will, has been frontline for healthcare workers. So there are people in our community that have also already begun being vaccinated through the large healthcare systems in the city. Um, moving on, we will be doing the first responders locally as a regional effort with Winthrop Brevier and Chelsea, beginning next week. Um, and also, I got, I received some communication from the park at um, the, which had previously been the Arbers. They are planning their vaccinations for their residents beginning in two weeks, uh, which alleviates a lot of, of nerves on my end, and I think on a lot of other people's ends for that, that population over there. Beginning in February, and this is a step, this is the step process. Individuals with two or more comorbid, morbidities, um, and over the age of seventy-five, um, pretty much those that are deemed high-risk for COVID-nineteen complications will be step one of Phase Two, followed by early education, and um, our teachers, those that work in transit, grocery, utility, food and agriculture, sanitation, our public works department, and public health workers. Um, the third step will be adults over the age of sixty-five, and then followed by any individual with one comorbidity, um, increasing their risk for COVID complications. And then around April, the goal is to start general public vaccinations. Um, we haven't gotten very much solid communication on the plan beyond our first responders at this point and what the role of local health will be. Um, I know that at the congregate care settings, such as like at the park at Harborview, they are be, they're working with the federal vaccine program. Um, and so unsure really what our definitive plans will be, but we'll have more hopefully as we roll out in the next few weeks. We're going through various trainings right now in my department about bringing online systems for scheduling, um, how to, you know, do workflow and throughput and calculate those things. So it's getting busier around here, but hopefully bringing an end to, to some of this. Happy to answer any questions that you, that you might have at this point.
Meredith, can you stop sharing your screen? Thanks. Thank you. Uh, any questions for Meredith, um, while she's here? Okay, thank you very much, Meredith, for the, and for all of your hard work, like always. Um, so with that, um, since we spent a fair amount of time getting um, a plethora of updates from the Council President about uh, the goings-on of uh, the town government. Um, I'll, unless there's questions for me, I'll see my time and we can move on.
Councilor Terry, Vice President.
Uh, thank you, Town Manager. Just three quick, quick, like, questions. You could either send them out or whatever. Um, I've gotten a handful, but a lot more than normal on real estate tax bills just went out. There's been some, I don't want to say issues, but people's bills have been a little out of skew, and um, sometimes it's, it's hard for them. I'm not sure if you can maybe give an update on what the hours are specifically, that people could talk to someone about their bill if they have questions about it. Um, so that was the first question, and these are relatively similar, kind of the same thing.
So, uh, they can call anytime. Um, there'll always be at least a voicemail there, um, but live people are there in staggered schedules, um, so they can feel free to call anytime.
Okay, and another question I've been getting is, and Denise actually helped me on this earlier, but just uh, senior abatements. A lot of the seniors are used to obviously going down and doing everything in person with pencil and paper, and um, you know, if you could just make sure, I think Denise had told me that um, anybody who has filed, and this is for the people that are listening out there, anyone, my understanding is, any senior who has filed for an abatement in the past will be see, will be receiving um, an application for that abatement again. Is that correct? Maybe, and I'm sorry, Town Manager, but Denise is accurate. Austin?
That's okay. Um, Anna Friedman is on here, and if she wants to unmute herself, she can answer this. If not, um, if she doesn't have the answer, um, we can, I'll answer this. I, I do believe that we do this, but Anna, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just turning up my phone. Um, I, I want to double-check on this, but we did not have a um, a senior work-off program for um, calendar year twenty twenty. Um, and so, and, and, and so I just need to check to see um, how that impacts um, the abatement process for the current, for twenty twenty-one.
But there are also resident, there are senior abatement programs that residents are just used to getting. Now, my, if, if we can just ask, I, I think Denise looked into this also for me today. Yeah, if, if I can ask Denise just to speak on it too.
I did actually talk to the Assessors' Office, and they had told me that what they do is the people that have requested abatements in the past, they do have a list of them, and they do automatically send them out every year to them.
Okay, so just for the seniors out there that got their tax bills, I just want them to be aware that that is in the process. Uh, and the last thing, if, if um, if through the Town Manager, I saw the Chief, Chief Delahenty, if we could just quickly blast, it's the beginning of the year, just on the resident sticker program, and to make sure everybody has their stickers on, and how that's going to be um, adhered to. Chief?
We can't hear you.
Yes.
Okay, I'll try to speak up a little bit. Uh, so we have not, have received a request from the Park and Clerk to suspend any sticker program. Traditionally, we do receive that request. I did hear today from numerous residents, um, the stickers going out of the Treasurer's Office have been slow. Uh, we did send the correspondence today to um, Monica Ford in my Deloiso, asking to, for them to confirm. If they are slow going out, then we would give a grace period for the enforcement, but right now, there's been no grace period uh, invoked.
We've, we've been hearing that there's delays at the post office, um, has been what we've been informed, um, as of late.
Uh, but so can, can we, we, can we ask for a, a small delay in the enforcement of this until we feel comfortable that most of the stickers have been out?
Yep, we'll, uh, we'll work on that tomorrow.
So granted.
Thank you.
Um, otherwise, uh, unless anyone else has any questions.
Any other questions? The Town Manager, CFO, yeah, Counsel General.
One quick question, and maybe I missed this. Um, I saw that we're moving the testing site indoors. Do we have a location, and do we have time for that yet, or is that to be determined?
Those are both to be determined. Um, but we, we're in like, we're very close. Uh, it will be this week when it's uh, announced. All right, thank you, everyone.
Is that the end of your report, Austin?
It is. Thank you.
Other questions? We'll move on to the uh, School Department Report, and the School Department uh, Committee met last night. And it was a short meeting. We had met for about an hour, and uh, information was that uh, school opened. Everybody was happy about having school open, but there were no problems in the hybrid, you know, for first day of school. Teacher, according to the superintendent, she was in each school, and it was uh, exciting. She said it was the most exciting thing since uh, you know, opening day school for the first time a person gets in school, first grader, and the first time a person gets in to the ninth grade and they, they hit high school. She said it was that kind of excitement with everybody that was coming back to school. They were very excited to be back. They had no uh, problems at all, that everybody followed the protocols. They had uh, enough monitors. They made sure that there were, there were monitors in, in every area. Uh, the children know what six feet apart meant. They knew what wearing a mask all day meant. Uh, some of the little, little kids in the uh, Gorman Fort Banks said it, they kept telling, told to put it up over their nose rather than under their nose. But other than that, they said it was a very successful opening of the hybrid uh, session. Uh, this reported that they are still looking for uh, some, uh, a few uh, monitors or remote teachers, because she does have eight high school teachers that are working at home, three middle school teachers that are working at home, uh, two remote teachers from Cummings, and two remote teachers are working at home from uh, Gorman Fort Banks. It was very um, sad to say that Nora Grimes, who's been a teacher there for thirty-three years, uh, is resigning at the end of this year, and uh, that was a big loss. What um, Lisa said they do need are crossing guards, a custodian, and some ESP workers. So if anybody is interested, uh, the school is accepting uh, applications for ESP workers, crossing guards, and custodians. So um, that is the end of the uh, School Committee Report. Do you have any questions? Oh, yes, there's one other thing. The School Committee voted four to three to have an in-person meeting, if possible, on the first uh, meeting in February. The first meeting in February uh, will be held in person if um, Lisa can find a place to do that. And I asked her to check with uh, our Town Manager, because we should be working in tandem with the School Department. If they're, they're opening and they have a place where they can open and open successfully, uh, which I don't know is possible, as I voted against it. But uh, if they have, they should be working with Austin and trying to find a place where everybody can use, if we're going to be using uh, in-person meetings. Moving on to old business. First matter on old business is Town Council direct the Town Manager on a solution for in-person meetings. And Barbara, Counsel Flahcard, you had a meeting about this issue?
Yes, and we amended the motion to read that the Town Council direct the Town Manager to create a solution to allow the town to safely return to meetings in person, since children are returning to school, or take any other action thereto, when the science dictates that the risk-benefit balance in appropriate, is appropriate for the council to return to in-person meetings. So it's sort of bumping it into Austin's court to figure.
So that meeting is, is coming out of committee?
Yes, it is.
And it does not need a second? Is there any discussion on that motion? Counsel DiMarco?
Uh, based on um, what you said, I saw the, I saw the meeting last night, uh, President Boncori, and I think it does make sense to work in tandem with the School Committee. Um, I saw that they did put a, a date, it, they're hoping to have that meeting at, uh, at the beginning of February. Um, you know, if possible, if possible, so everything's open to change. So I would, I would amend the motion to match and mirror the School Committee uh, uh, motion, and say target date, first week of February, if possible.
I'll second the amendment for discussion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to amend the motion to put a target date on it of February uh, first meeting in February. I don't know, we have the date yet on that, Denise? First meeting in February would be what? I could check it.
Our first meeting would be the second.
Okay.
President Boncori, if I may, again. Um, I do want to be clear that this would not require everybody on the Town Council to be in attendance. Um, I also want to be clear that this is a target date. It's still when we, when it's deemed safe. Um, but it just, it, it puts us in line with what the School Committee has already passed.
Council President?
Yes, uh, Counsel Flahcard.
Uh, I'd like to reiterate what I said in the, in the committee meeting, that we're returning the kids to school because they are being hurt by not being in school. But the council is functioning perfectly fine on these Zoom meetings, and it seems unreasonable to take an additional risk to return early to in-person meetings.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Christopher.
I agree with um, with Barbara, and I also think that the, the motion as amended seems to me contradictory. I don't think you can put a, um, you can't say in one sentence, "We'll do this when it's safe", and then in another sentence, "By February first." You, you're either going to give the Town Manager the ability to make that determination, or you're not. Um, and so I think that this amendment would effectively, um, it would take what we did in committee and eliminate it essentially, by saying we, this decision would need to be made at that point. Um, so I, I, I did vote for it in committee, and I think that uh, this would take, uh, that this amendment would change my vote on this altogether. I, I don't think that it's, um, I, it doesn't make any sense to say, "Do it when it's safe", but also do it on February first. Um, I, I think that that's a contradictory motion.
Counsel Farino?
I tend to concur with Counsel Christopher, and I think it uh, it defeats the point that we're, we're looking to be uh, in a safe environment uh, with the science and the um, matrix that dictates that. And uh, so I would have to agree that I would not uh, go along with this amendment.
Okay, Counsel Terry?
Um, with regards to the amendment, I, 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 I agree with Counsel Christopher that it is redundant. I think if the amendment was to pass, it should eliminate that last sentence, which does cause a redundancy. I do, however, believe that that first me- I do however, believe that that first meeting in February should be done. We just asked 1,000 kids on a daily basis to go back to school, which also included upwards of 290 staff and support members. Um, and by all accounts, the superintendent's office, the administration for the schools have done an incredible job. We have an $80 million middle high school that we just built with a 600-person auditorium. We have nine people on the council that, and, and with, uh, the town manager and the town council clerk is 11. We're in a Harvey room that on a good day, you'll have 11 people and possibly seats for 30. We're looking to not relinquish at all what we have begun as far as participation. I do think a lot of this participation is because of COVID. But, um, I, I would encourage us to still have call-ins. I would encourage counselors who do not deem it safe to stay at home and be remote. Um, and I would encourage the same obviously for residents, but, um, you know, it's hard to ask a six-year-old or a six to seventeen-year-old to do something that we're not willing to do. I feel perfectly safe. I feel confident that the town managers, uh, has done a, an admirable job with keeping the town safe and, uh, in, in doing it while school is now back in session. Um, you know, just, and I understand Council Flockhart's point on the kids psychologically, it's a need. It's been a need since September. It's been a need. Uh, and, and I'm, you know, a little discouraged that it's taken this long, but I, I applaud the school committee uh, for doing the right thing and getting these kids back in school. Uh, nothing we do here is easy. None of these decisions are easy. But, uh, I think it's time that we get back to in-person meetings as best we can. We have facilities, state-of-the-art facilities, air quality. We have machines that we've bought. We've had PPE. We have the equipment necessary to do this and we should get it done.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Council General, you haven't been heard?
Yes.
Town manager and then to Peter.
No, thank you, Council President. Um, I'd just like to echo the point that's been made that, um, you know, I, I, I do trust the recommendation coming out of committee. I thought that was very well worded. I think that was very, um, it was much better than the original motion that we had on the table. Um, it sort of closes out the loop on the when question and the when would be left up to, um, when town administration deems it safe to do so. I just want to, I guess, just bring up the point here to my colleagues that, um, you know, going back to in-person meetings, um, well, take a step back, you know, every decision that I make here on this council, I think about what the benefit to the public would be. Um, and if, if we're in a situation where, um, the public cannot attend our meetings in person, I don't know uh, what the benefit to the public would be, um, for us to go back to meeting in person. Um, and so I guess that's something that I would look to, um, in the town manager's recommendation back to the council. Um, and, and before making a decision on whether or not we should or shouldn't go back. So, um, there are some questions that I would still have on what the look and what the feel would be of these in-person meetings before we were to go back. And that's why I would not, uh, support an amendment to put a date on this.
Okay, here we move the amendment of Council, no, Austin?
So, uh, one, I wanted to try to answer some of the questions before you all voted on things. And two, um, I just had a couple of questions that I wanted to try to clarify, um, that maybe could help bring some consensus. Um, for the group that wants to meet in person, do you want the entire group of the council to meet in person? Or do you just want a space that for a portion of the council that wants to meet in person? Um, you'd most likely have to have a laptop and utilize Zoom, uh, similar to now, but you could be meeting in the same space. Would that be something that would be amenable? Because right now, the Harvey room can accommodate four of you. If there's four of you that would like to meet in person, you could have a group of you in the Harvard room. We have the remote cameras with WCA TV. Um, there's a way that that could potentially work if there is a core group of you that would like to meet in person. Um, if the idea is that you want all nine of you, um, along with myself and Denise to be able to meet together, uh, we will most likely be looking at the, um, senior center in that, um, scenario. Um, that said, um, not the great setup, best setup in terms of like, uh, electrical and those types of things because we would most likely, again, be in a situation where someone would be or more than one person would be remotely connected to the meeting over Zoom. And we'd most likely have to have the public participation over Zoom, um, or another video platform. So I just wanted to try to know what direction you all are looking to go. Um, I'm, I'm good to plan whatever you all want to try to go with. Um, but I didn't know if the intent is a small group of you being able to get together in person or ensure that the whole group of you can get together in person and then if people want to opt out.
Okay, uh, Council Christopher, you had your hand up again.
Um, yeah, that was before Austin, but I guess I just, I, I'd want to know first if the motion is going to be to strike the words when the town manager deems it to be safe and put it in replace of that, um, February first. And if so, I, um, you know, I think that, I don't think that's a very good idea. Um, because we could be in a very similar situation to what we've been doing in months pla- in months past um, with, with virus numbers and everything else. Um, and at the same time, with the comparison to schools, we're talking about two very different things. Uh, you know, data has shown that students were not receiving the same level of education that they were receiving when they were in school. I can't think of anything, uh, that has really hindered my participation as a member of this council by participating in these meetings on Zoom. There, there's a very big distinction between those two things. You know, I, I, you've seen this be implemented in some other communities that are around us where they have, uh, you know, some members showing up in person, some members showing up, um, o- over Zoom and it's, it's logistically much more difficult. I, I agree. If we could, if we could come up with a situation where, where we could get the pa- public to participate uh, in person, then that might change my decision on this. But the fact of the matter is, is that the, the capacity limits that are in place by the state right now just don't allow us to do that in a way that, that the state, the state has deemed it to be safe. So until we get to at least that point, I just don't think that I can say that the council should be doing this any other way than we're doing it right now.
I'm not speaking in favor or against this, uh, but I do want to speak, uh, to the point that the council can decide itself when it's going to be and where it's going to be. And I, as Council President, can call a meeting for a certain place and a certain time. And so can a group of councilors call for a certain place and a certain time for a meeting. However, as I said last night in the school department, I think if we're going to meet in person or if we're going to meet partially in person and partially remote, we have to try to do it in tandem. So we don't look like, you know, there's a chicken on this side of the road and a different chicken on this side of the road. They don't know where they're going. They're going to run into each other. I, I think that's why I suggested that, uh, the school committee wait and let the superintendent and, you know, the town manager get together and work out a plan that would be safe for everybody. And so that both meetings and both groups could meet at the same place, whether it be the auditorium or a gymnasium or someplace that would fit the protocols. Because I'm really concerned mostly about, not us meeting, but about, you know, uh, the ability for the public to attend our meetings. If we're meeting in person and we can only have five people from the public in person, we're not really, uh, being a open public meeting. So I, I think that needs to be looked into by the superintendent and by, uh, our town manager and to give us a recommendation. The decision is ultimately up to the council, only the council, but we need that, I think we need that recommendation as to what we can do following protocols and making sure that the public is invited and as much public is, wants to come, can come in. And we'd be able to do that right now remotely.
So just one note on the, in terms of capacity, um, there, there are state-level capacity limits on gatherings right now. Um, so that's not something that we can get around. So it's not, uh, at any point in time until the state changes it, um, are we going to be allowed to have unlimited number of people come to a meeting? Um, there is a set upper limit of how many people can congregate in one space at one time right now.
Well, that's what I, I think we need you to look into with, uh, and, and also bring Lisa into it and work with her on it.
I, so I guess again, my, my question is, is the goal a space where some of you can meet in person or a space where all of you can meet in person with the public? If it's with the public and all of you in person, um, that changes what we're looking for.
Okay, Council Terry.
Yes, and, and to get back to Austin's question, my thought, a- as someone who is a proponent of meeting in person would be obviously to have a space where, wherever that might be, that we can all meet. I don't think, obviously, it sounds like a lot of us would choose not to. But I think ideally it would be something that we could. Um, and, uh, you know, again, I, I, I applaud Council President's suggestion with, um, you know, letting the school committee, uh, the superintendent do some work on this. I, I look at a place like the auditorium and they have mobile carts at the middle high school with the, with the big screen TVs that you could have a Zoom meeting. So you would, I mean, people mostly have laptops all the time anyway, but you wouldn't necessarily have to be looking at the monitor on your laptop. You'd have a big screen on the auditorium stage, so to speak. You'd have it taped off just as they've done with the hockey rink for, for games that will be progressing this weekend. It's a very limited amount of seats. I, I, I want to say there were, um, I could be wrong, but I want to say the number was sixty, um, for seats that were literally taped off at the rink. So when, you know, whoever is eligible to come in can't come in, they are allotted to sit in those specific seats where the tape is. Uh, and you could knock off rows, every other row, whatever the, whatever Austin finds out is the capacity, then that would have to be what it is. With that big screen TV there, you would also have the ability to have, again, to have citizens that were not able to come, have them come in and ask questions through the, through the big screen TV, uh, which would be easier for us all to see everybody. And, uh, and I think you'll still get that participation that, that we're all hoping continues throughout the year. Um, even when God willing, we're through this pandemic, that the participation continues and, and you still have that flexibility even. Hopefully, when we're back at the Harvey room, we would have the flexibility to let somebody call in to ask a question. Um, but I would, you know, to get back to Austin's question, if we're going to, if I was going to direct Austin or, or ask, ask him to do this, I would ask for a, a space that would accommodate all of us. But I mean, there, you know, Council President could take a poll and see who would be willing and who not, but I wouldn't want to just get a space for four. I think at the beginning of this, we had one of our meetings where there were three or four of us a- at the, uh, WCAT and the rest was on Zoom. I don't think that's what we're looking for, uh, uh, for myself, speaking for someone who would like to get back to in-person meetings. I do think, you know, to Council Christopher's point about not being able to do anything that we can't do on Zoom, I think they have been, you know, they have absolutely gotten better over the, you know, nine months that we've been doing this. Um, but I do think that we don't have the free flow in discussion that we would have in an open meeting. There is a lot less that's discussed that could be discussed. And that's just my suggestion. But to answer, answer Austin's question, I would look at a bigger venue like the auditorium, the gymnasium at the high school or, or the, a senior center would probably be the, you know, the least of the three that would work. I think there's a lot of technology at the high school that would make it more attractive and able to work.
So Council President, uh, it's Governor's COVID Order fifty-nine, um, applied a limit of ten persons for indoor gatherings and twenty-five persons for outdoor gatherings to both private homes and event venues and public spaces. Um, so that's, that's the order that we need to work within until, um, twelve oh one AM on January tenth, um, unless it's further extended. Um, so, uh, that's, uh, what the governor's order is on that.
Okay. All right, let's, uh, take up the amendment. The amendment is to, uh, change it from when, uh, the town manager deems it reasonable and right to, uh, make it February second. Is that correct?
Boncori? Um, I'm going to withdraw my amendment at this time. Doesn't seem like we need it. It's, as long as we work in tandem, I think we can get it done at a re- at, at the reasonable time with the school.
Okay. Do you withdraw your second vice president, Senator Terry?
Uh, if Council DeMarco wants to withdraw his motion, I'm not going to stand in his way.
Okay, I think that's the best. All right, let's go forward on the motion that's brought forward by the committee. Would you please restate the motion, uh, Council of Flockhart?
Okay, that the town council direct the town manager to create a solution to allow the town to safely return to meetings in person since children are returning to school or take any other action thereto when the science dictates that the risk benefit balance is appropriate for the council to return to in-person meetings.
Thank you. All right, all those in, any other discussion? Harry, none? All those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Carol.
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Council Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes. Motion passes. And I would ask Austin that you do get in touch with the superintendent and see if you can do something together.
And we'll talk to Lisa about it tomorrow morning. Look forward to it.
All right, moving on, the next motion in the whole business is a motion to replenish pest control funding of $20,000. Uh, Vice President Luteri?
Thank you, Council President. I moved that the town council vote to transfer $20,000 from the town council reserve to replenish the inspectional services purchased services account due to extraordinary pest control expenses as estimated by, for the remainder of fiscal year twenty-one or take any other action relative thereto. This did come out of committee with positive recommendation.
Right, it does not need a second? Is there any discussion on this? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of, uh, replenishing the pest control by $20,000, signify by saying yes when your name is called.
Council Ruggiero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Council Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes. Thank you, motion is carried. The next motion to take up under all businesses is that the town council authorize the town manager to sign the North Suffolk Resilience and Sustainability Agreement. And this agreement is an agreement between Chelsea, Revia, and Winthrop. And you want to explain this, um? I guess neither committee brought it up, so we still can bring it up because it's not the first time it's been on the agenda. Do you want to explain this, uh, town manager phase on and, uh, see if we get a motion from someone to go forward?
Please, um, I will be brief. Uh, on, I believe it's the second or third page of, um, a budget message last year. I talked about a regional, um, office concerning climate and sustainability, focusing on things like the Wetlands Protection Act, um, future, uh, energy programs and things like that for the town of Winthrop. Um, since I've been in Winthrop, I've worked on regional initiatives. Um, I brought this to the attention of City Manager Embrino and Mayor Arigo a couple of years ago, and I've been working with them and NA PC on applying to a power foundation grant um, with Chelsea as the host community, um, for about a year now. Um, $600,000 is a very good amount of money to get a regional office started. Um, they are going to, uh, kind of tailor their efforts to each community. Chelsea needs certain things from this office, Revia needs certain things. Winthrop especially needs conservation, um, help and wetlands protection things along with, uh, support for, um, our new planning department and, uh, working on some resilient building which we got a checklist from NA PC. Um, but we're going to be incorporating that into the building permit process as well. Um, so just on top of everything, looking for money for us. So, uh, this is a really good agreement to get into. Um, we, even longer term, in the third year of it, are investing less than what we were paying for, um, our grant. We even longer term in the third year of it are investing less than what we were paying for, um, our grant office and, um, our conservation, um, agent that was working on a part-time basis. This is a very, uh, low-risk investment for the town. And it's a great opportunity to work with neighboring communities that have similar, uh, climate and energy impacts that we do. So it's a great opportunity for us to work with, uh, our foundation, with, uh, Chelsea Revere as well as the NAPC. Thank you.
And it's important that we got the six hundred thousand dollar grant to do this. Uh, is there a motion to accept this? Motion by Council Honan, seconded by Council. Uh, Council Farino? Okay, is there any discussion on it? Is there any question in the motion?
Council President?
Yes.
My understanding was we were gonna have a joint committee meeting, which is why we did not discuss it in finance. I I think on basis of it, it has a lot of merits, however, I, you know. It always costs money to save money, and I don't know if we're in a position to spend any money right now for the next couple of years. And we don't know what the real financial impacts are of this. Um, I will be voting no, but I would move the question.
Okay. I have looked at the contract. It looks like it's very, uh, in-depth and it's very, very good. I see it signed by, uh, Tom Ambrosino and and Brian Orego. And, uh, it gives us something we don't have now and something that we need right away. And that is a conservation agent, because our conservation committee has not been meeting and 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 not been approving, uh, projects because of the lack of a conservation commit- agent. And this is, uh, uh, the fastest and one would get us a conservation agent. But, uh, motions have been made by Council Honan and seconded by Council Farino. Is there any other discussion on? Hearing done, all those in favor of, uh, of, uh, let's see, the actual wording is to authorize the town manager to sign the North Suffolk Resiliency and Sustainability Agreement. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes when your name is called.
Council Ruggiero.
Yes.
Council Placot.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council LaConte.
Yes.
Council Freeno.
Yes.
Vice President Luteri.
No.
President Boncory.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Uh, the first order of business and new business in the first of, uh, year of January is the election of a vice president of the, uh, council. Are there any nominees for the office of Vice President of the Winter Town Council? Are there any nominees, Council Ruggiero?
Like to nominate Council Peter Christopher.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Honan. Are there any other nominees for the office of Vice President of the Winter City Council? Are there any other nominees for the office of Vice President of the Winter City Council? Are there any other nominees for the office of Vice President for the Winter City Council? Hearing none, I will, uh, direct it that is one vote be cast for Council Christopher. And the Council of Christopher is hereby elected the new Vice President. And, uh, Council Christopher, congratulations. And please go and get sworn in with Denise tomorrow.
I'll do that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, under new business, and I'm not sure here because I got two different things in front of me. Uh, it says the town council appropriate two hundred and seventy-two thousand cost for emergency repair, but I also got motion says three hundred and seventy-three thousand. What is the cor- is there a correct motion?
It's two seventy-two.
Okay.
Two fifty, sorry.
All right, uh, is that correct, Hannah?
Yep, that's correct. Um, I can provide some more information on this and so can, um, Director Steve Calla. Uh, but this motion, the total amount of the project is going to be three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. But the motion in front of the council tonight is for the two hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred, I believe it is. Um, and we can provide more information when you're, um, when that motion's up for conversation, but it's to address the, um, the recent sewer main issue on Revere Street.
Okay, so there is a a motion under new business to appropriate two hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the cost of emergency repair of collapsed sewer main on Revere Street. And I will, uh, send that motion to the Finance Committee, uh, for approval and a recommendation for our next meeting. The following, uh, motions, uh, all motions from TSAC. A motion to accept the recommendation of TSAC on terrace half, park half and cottage half. A motion to accept the recommendation of TSAC for four-way sub-sign on Rover's Avenue and Highland Avenue. And a motion from TSAC to allow parking on cushions of Beach Road. I would, um, send all three of those recommendations to Rules and Ordinance uh, to come up with the appropriate, uh, ordinance changes or to recommend these changes to us, whether or not we do these changes. Okay, so first committee, uh, Money Committee goes to Finance, TSAC. Motions will go to Rules and Ordinance. Next thing on the, um, agenda is discussion of a planner. I I mentioned the planner in my, uh, state of the town, and I think Austin would like to, uh, tell us about the planner.
So an offer has gone out, um, to a candidate for a planning position. Just working on some paperwork with that, so I won't actually say her name. I will say it's her, um, most likely starting the week of, uh, the eighteenth. Pending, just again, some paperwork, but, uh, she's very excited to come on board. And she understands very clearly that the primary task that she's gonna be working on, um, initially is going to be, uh, the middle school site. And, uh, when I say working on that, it's working in conjunction, yeah, excuse me, in conjunction with, uh, our legal advice as well as the planning board, um, to get, um, some type of, uh, zoning language back to you all to be able to vote on as a council. Um, and then, um, after, um, that comes to you and you all, uh, make some sort of decision concerning the zoning of that site. Getting that project out to bid. I can't wait to continue to make progress on, uh, this project. Um, and this individual, um, will be shepherding this, will be available to the public. Um, and this will be, um, the initial baby of the department. Um, and then there will be bigger things like interpreting, uh, the one twenty thirty work, um, that's gonna be presented on at the next council meeting. Looking at, uh, townwide master plan and things like that. They will build those things up over time, but initially, uh, uh, this individual has a project management background. Um, and I look forward to, um, shattering the, um, middle school project to her hands. She's very capable and I look forward to, um, helping the town make some progress on this project.
Thank you. Anybody want to ask any questions about incoming planner?
She'll be on a meeting in the future too.
Okay, should be on our next meeting?
Maybe, uh, if not the first meeting in February.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and also one for discussion, was discussion of fiscal year twenty-two budget. And, uh, someone asked to have that put on?
Sure, so we've started the process of that, um, in terms of working with our department heads about their budget submissions and the capital plan. Um, Anna's already kind of hit the ground running with that. Uh, I'll, Anna, you can jump in right now if you'd like to.
Yeah, the, uh, just to echo what the town manager has just said, we are internally meeting, um, actually this week and next week. My calendar, uh, looks horrendous right now, um, all day long, every day, meeting with all the department heads, um, to do an initial run-through. Um, and then working with them, consistent with our normal process every year, um, putting together a memo for the town manager to go through and see where we're at. Um, I have a feeling that the requests will certainly be, um, in excess of what we will have for revenues. Um, I'm updating the revenue projections that I presented to the council, but that was early November, um, and refreshing where we are for this year. Um, I expect that in late January or early February, I'll have additional, uh, revenue numbers for the current year to update the council on. Um, we are, I will say that, um, the numbers that I've seen for revenues following the presentation that I gave in November on our current year. They've deteriorated further from where we were for the current year, um, which is concerning. So we're keeping a very close eye on that. Um, January and February will be very telling for us, um, to see where we are. So that will inform how we assess the requests, um, that our departments have for next year and what types of budget, uh, closing, um, sort of tactics we might have to take, um, as we're required to have a balanced budget. But that's underway and looking forward to working with the Finance Commission on the budget process this year and the town council. Um, so I'll be preparing any memos that, um, that they, uh, need from us, um, uh, whenever those requests come in.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Council, do you have any questions? Council, uh, Vice President Luteri.
I guess you can call me until Pete gets one in. So, I, in in regards to this, I I I would ask Denise to post a meeting for the Finance Commission next Thursday night. Uh, January fourteenth, uh, Zoom meeting, I guess, at six o'clock. And would ask, um, town manager if available and, uh, CFO uh, to attend that. Also still looking for information that I was hoping to get on trash contract and number of households in in Winthrop. If you can get that to me whenever you have a chance, possibly, uh, Anna. And look forward to trying to be proactive with fiscal twenty-two budget and still pondering fiscal twenty-one as numbers come in.
Yeah, we can get that to you. I I think we sent it over, um, and we'll, we'll go back and, uh, we'll make sure that gets sent to you on the trash contract, please.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Any other discussion on either of those? Hearing none, then we will go back to public comment. Do we have any public comment? I see we lost quite a few people.
Uh, Colleen Murphy.
Hi, how are you? Hi, just wanna thank you all for what you do. Going forward, when whenever you decide to do with meetings, I just wanna say for myself, I've never listened to more meetings in my entire adult life than I have since this pandemic. And I've learned so much, so I hope that Zoom continues. The main reason I'm calling is I don't know who 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 I even speak to, but I was on a planning. I listened to a planning, um, committee a couple of weeks ago, and they were talking about development. And, um, I know that we need to develop in the town of Winthrop and fill what you said. It's a gem of a community where we live. I love it here. I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. We're not Revere, we're not Somerville, we're not Newton, we're not Cambridge. And I think there needs to be more transparency between the the planning board, the zoning committee, the building inspector. And I would invite you all to come by Tileston Road and look at the development that was allowed. And I'd like all of you to come by and look at it and tell me that this is the vision that we have for the community, because we technically have two row houses across the street from me. So I don't know, I don't know if it's looking at the variances and looking at what we're allowing. I know we need to develop, but I think we have to look at the size of things that we're allowing to be built. That's it, thank you. Uh, I mean, I was on the planning committee and I, uh, I think there, uh, there's new members. And they were even questioning how this development was allowed to be, to go through. And I think Councilman Farino was on there, and I applaud you because we do have some really beautiful historical sites. I applaud kids only, that that development is gorgeous. It's beautiful. And it fits the area of that development, but I wish you would all come by and look to see what was allowed. But thank you very much, and I hope you keep the Zoom going.
Thank you, Colleen. Any other public comment? Again, the number is one, six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six. The ID number is eight, two, zero, two, four, one, eight, four, two, five, seven. I see one other hand, and, uh, I think that, is that it, Denise?
We have Jen. Jen is on.
Hi, I just wanna thank everybody. I'm out of precinct six. Um, first time calling in and just wanted to say a couple of things. I think if you choose to do back in person, you're actually making a mistake. More people have never been more involved, and in the last ten months, we all know how to do this. So whether you all sit in a building or you don't is irrelevant. That's one. Two, my next statement is, um, I received my real estate tax bill. And given what we've been through in the last ten months, I'm very disheartened to see that there was a lien for four dollars and sixteen cents put on my home. That's disturbing. That my water bill was posted, there was an error on my behalf. But now I have to deal with a mortgage company for four dollars and sixteen cents, and it's disgraceful.
Um, you should call the Treasurer Collector's Office as soon as possible.
I did, I called them this morning.
Okay, we'll look into that for you. Thank you.
Jen, you still there?
Yep, that's all. Like I just said, you know, I, I applaud all that you do, but I think going back in person, I'll say it again. You're gonna lose a lot of people, because times like this when people are taking care of children, people are just getting home from work. They don't go to these meetings because, one, they can hide behind a phone or a computer and not be known. They don't show up to the meetings, and to put people in jeopardy when you don't need to, when we all know how to do this after ten months is a foolish thing, and why waste town money on electricity, on heat, on internet, on having people set things up when it's not necessary? Yous all look pretty comfortable to me. Doesn't, I I I'm just trying to figure out for the, I'm trying to figure.
I wish that we could see who was calling in.
And I wish you could too, but I guess I'm trying to figure out what is the benefit to us as the town to make it go a different route in a time when technology is where it's at. Whether you sit with a beautiful screen in the background or a window or whatever, sitting inside of a building wasting town money on electricity and heat to look through your papers, is it necessary? We should be looking for ways to save money, not looking for ways to spend money so you could say you all sat together. It it's just my opinion, but I think if you took a town survey of those, especially at this time of night in the meetings, you're gonna get more phone calls and more input and more information, because through this pandemic, I've never been so notified about things and meetings going on in this town. So I think you're gonna lose a lot of that by going back to in-person meetings. And a lot of people, like elderly, don't have capacity of Zoom or to get to a meeting. So picking up their cordless phone, it's easy to call in and just listen to a meeting. So I just think it's something you guys should revisit for the sake of the town and needing people to be involved and people to be heard. I think that this is a much better route to go, and that's just my opinion, and I thank all of you for what you do.
Thank, thank you, Jen. All right, you have another one, Heather?
Yes, we do. How are you?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Heather, we can hear you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you for everything. I am not originally from Winthrop, but have been here for two and a half years and love it. So I think it's getting better and, um, I really enjoy, uh, uh, like seeing the twenty thirty plans and everything that's planned for the future of Winthrop. It's, um, really exciting. Also wanna comment that I do have to agree, um, doing, going back in person right now seems a little foolish and pointless. But say COVID ended tomorrow, I still think there should be a Zoom aspect to these meetings, because having small children, there's no way I could make it to a meeting like this. Um, so I do appreciate having a, some kind of virtual aspect to the meetings. But really, I have a question. What do you mean that the the recommendations for the TSAC items? What's the next step for those?
Once, uh, TSAC makes a recommendation, it goes to Rules and Ordinance, and Rules and Ordinance, uh, puts together a motion either approving them or or denying them, and it comes back in front of the council for a vote. Uh, they they put the recommendation of TSAC, like, uh, we we were looking for a one-way on, uh, Harborview. I think that's one of them, and I've received many calls about that, and I know there was a lot of people who wanted to see that one-way go forward. So TSAC recommends that to, uh, the town council. The town council sends it to Rules and Ordinance, where the Rules and Ordinance Committee will write that. Where the rules and ordinance committee will write that into the bylaws of the town. And then it will come back to the council to approve that new bylaw change. And then it is done immediately. Once they vote on it, it's done. So it'll be at the next meeting.
So for the rules and ordinance meetings, is it open to the public too?
Yeah, it's all, every meeting is public, yes.
Alright, thank you. Um, I, I, I'm on the corner of Grover's and Highland and witnessed several accidents. So that was something, um, the four-way stop sign.
Four-way stop sign.
Mm-hmm, yes. So I was wondering next steps for that, so thank you.
Uh, Council Christopher will post a meeting and it will be your open public meeting.
Council President, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, Heather, you, I'm pretty sure that's precinct six. Um, if that's the case, you can feel free to send me an email and we can chat offline.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, any other public comment? Public comment? I see we have people attending. I don't see any hands. No public comment? Last chance. Alright, seeing no other public comment, uh, we'll move into uh, public relations, and again. I am reiterating uh, that we have an opening uh, on the airport hazards committee. We have an opening on the commission of uh, diversity, inclusion and community relations. We have an opening on the planning board, and we have one more opening on the citizens finance committee. So please, uh, as I said in my. State of this town, we need you to make this town prosper. We need you to get involved. Here, we have twenty-six attendees. Some of you are already on committees, but many of you are not. Get involved, join the committee. We need you. Uh, the more voices we have, the stronger we are as a community. I wanna thank Denise Quest personally. I left her completely out of my state of the town. Statement, but she is my right hand, and uh, as a secretary to the council, she does an immense amount of work.
Oh, you're the best.
But most people think Austin is running the town. Austin, tell the truth, it's Denise.
I don't have much to say.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion for a German.
Motion.
Motion's been made.
Oh, second.
Council Vice President Lutieri and seconded by Council DeMarco. Uh, those in favor of a German, we say yes when your name is called.
Council Ruggiero?
Yes.
Council Placat?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Council Freeno? Vice President Lutieri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Be safe, wear your mask, social distance. Let's beat this pandemic. Thank you for listening. Good night.